Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our two by two. Today is September 25th is 4:32. At this time, we're calling the meeting to order and we'll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have roll call?
Mayor Soros.
Present.
President Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Mathulik.
Present.
Trustee Gamboy.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Agenda item four, community forum. Do we have any cards or speakers?
Through the chair, we currently do not have any members of the public signed up for the community forum. However, I did start a two-minute timer, which is reflected on the top left corner of your screen. If any interested parties do sign up for the community forum, I will be sure to let you know at the conclusion of that timer, but feel free to carry on with the agenda.
Thank you. All right, agenda item five, consent calendar and approval of agenda. Vice President Boy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item five A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Soros.
Yes.
President Fox.
Aye.
Councilmember Mathulik.
Aye.
Trustee Gamboy.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're now on agenda item six, presentations. We have six A proclamation recognizing September 2025 as public school month.
I am. Yeah, very nice to meet you.
You're wearing the four hats here, huh?
I am. All right. I've got a proclamation from our office recommending recognizing September 25th as public schools month. You're all good. And I will read it here. Whereas we celebrate the power and promise of America's public school system, which has empowered so many students to realize their full potential. And whereas our system of universal free of public education provides the opportunity for strengthening Americans' future by educating our youth to become responsible and caring humans. And whereas we are grateful for the commitment of teachers and staff in our Valeo public schools who ensure that our classrooms are full of hope and possibilities. And whereas some of our nation's greatest scholars and scientists, artists and humanitarians and dreamers and doers got their start at a public school. Many have further honed their skills in our colleges, universities, apprenticeships and career and technical education programs. Whereas in 1920, Public Schools Week was initiated by the Grand Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons in California. The California Masons have for more than a century supported public education through the observance of Public Schools Month and its related programs and initiatives. And whereas, an education is something that no one can take away, therefore, we must remain committed to supporting our schools, which open the doors for opportunity wider for everyone. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Andrea Soros, Mayor of the City of Valeo, hereby recognize September 2025 as Public Schools Month and encourage all residents to attend school board meetings, participate in school-related activities and join in a concerted effort to support the hard-working goals of our students, teachers, administrators and school board members. We are doing that today here. So, thank you for joining us. Would you mind introducing yourself, sir, and feel free to give a few remarks?
Of course. I'm Gerald Bettman. I'm a member of Naval Lodge Number Eighty-Number Eighty-Seven. And I'm the, I'm our delegate to the school district. Although most, almost all of our members are public schools people and most of Valeo. We, we do this every, well, annually. And to publicize public schools is a very, very important thing for this country. Without the public schools, we probably have a few smart people, but not so much all of us. Everybody having this opportunity is really important and we want to promote that. That public schools is a privilege for the whole population, if they take advantage of it. If they can't, perhaps they can get their skills elsewhere. So, this is a privilege to us and we promote public schools for everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And this is for you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
You want to hold it up?
Sure. Yeah, it's in front of the body, I guess.
Where do I go?
I think we are, yeah. I'll go down in front so he's not myself.
Yeah, we're just gonna stand back. Are we going down there or are we? We typically just.
Okay.
What was that?
I think he said you got him five times off, so.
Yeah, yeah. Trustees, do you want to come here too? You want to get the.
Oh, yeah. Let's bring her. These are our.
They can, they can stand right down there. There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And through the chair, there was no signups for the community forum.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. And now we are down to agenda item seven, inter-agencies. Isav Chief Tal here? Would you like to do, say a few comments?
Great. Thank you, President Fox. I just have a couple of quick just updates. We, we still check in regularly with the superintendent. We actually had our check-in today. So, we, we have a great relationship, kind of talking about things that occur during the month and then just kind of planning out for the future. So, some of the updates that I provided this morning for him and his staff really talked about some key changes that are going to be happening that the school district and likely the parents will, will see some immediate benefits. So, the sheriff contract was approved. And so what that means is, starting in January, there will be sheriff's deputies that will be assisting our city with public safety. And inevitably those areas that they will be helping us in, which is beats two, three and four, for a period of four days a week, which is Wednesday night through Saturday night, from 2:00 PM to midnight. So, those, those additional resources will most likely improve response times for high priority calls as well as some of the lower priority calls. We're really excited about that. We recently just implemented a new proactive team. We're calling our team the Problem Orientated Policing Team, POP Team. So, that consists of one supervisor and three officers. So, they're going to be utilized for a variety of crime issues, but also quality of life issues as well. So, there's high demand, as you can probably imagine, for their help. And so they're going to be very busy. So, they, they went operational on the 23rd, so very recent. And then lastly, we were able to augment one more traffic officer into our traffic division. So, traffic is a huge, obviously, concern for the schools to school from school and of course during the day when school is in session. So, we're hoping to do more traffic campaigns, whether it be just traffic enforcement, just giving warnings, maybe doing some of the crosswalk enforcements that we have been able to do in years past. And then lastly, recruitment. We, we looked at a couple of ways that we could accelerate some of our recruitment process. So, I'm quite hopeful with some of the new improvements in conjunction with the recruitment and retention bonus, that we'll be able to accelerate recruiting. So, we are still in track for probably about three years-ish to be fully staffed to our full complement. So, I'm going to turn over to Sergeant Hollis here. He'll talk a little bit about our national night out.
So, October 7th, 2025, we're going to have the 2025 National Night Out. We're going to meet here at City Hall at the steps at approximately 4:30 PM. Quick briefing and group photo, and then we're going to hit the streets. Right now, we have approximately 25 neighborhoods that we will be visiting. I'm glad to say that we have representation in every district and every beat for the city. We have goodie bags that we're going to provide to the host. And I expect it to be a, a great event. And if you have any city workers or people with the school that want to come and assist with National Night Out, please let us know. Provided Ms. Selena the locations and she did say that VCUSD wasn't going to join us, so we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, especially with the partnership with the sheriff, I'd like to thank all the members of the city that have worked so diligently and hard to promote that partnership so that we have more presence and protection in Valeo for all of our citizens, but for us specifically, for our schools and our students. I just thank you from the bottom of our heart for all that you've done to make this work. I know it took a long time, Mayor Soros. You were working hard with that. I know, I said a manager, all of you. It's just, it means a great deal to find all ways to be able to, when you have a deficit or you don't have enough officers, this is going to help out immensely. So, I just want to let you know how much it means to us, just as a citizen, as a school board member, and just to make sure promoting safety. So, it, it means a lot that all the hard work and hours behind the scene, I want you to know how appreciative we are.
Yeah, I agree. Tremendous team effort, starting with the Senator moving to the sheriff's office. Support, full support from City Council, full support from the Board of Supervisors. So, everything really kind of came together. So, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chief Tal, and thank you Sergeant Hollis for your report. A couple of other things that you, you kind of did mention, but at our, at our most recent city council meeting, we, to help with the recruitment, we also moved forward the, the plans for our police station. So, that's helping us move forward and that we anticipate that to be helping with our recruitment, with our police officers. But also, that week of National Night Out, we also have, and I don't see a representative from Safe Road to School, but is also International Walk World and Bike to School Day on that Wednesday, the 8th. So, we look forward to everyone's participation. I know there's quite a few schools and individuals. And I know we have a lot of elected officials that help participate in, in that event. So, those are a couple of other things that are up, up on the horizon that, during that very busy week.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Mathulik. Any other comments? Thank you very much for your report and for all that you do. Our next inter-agency GVRD is here. If they can report out. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Anthony Ryan. I'm the Recreation Services Director for the Greater Valeo Recreation District, filling in for our general manager, Mr. Gabriel Lanus, who unfortunately is not able to be with us today, but he did send me to represent the agency. Just wanted to share out that we have a number of community events coming up. Some of the bigger ones that we have coming is our Nightmare on Glen Street, which takes place on Halloween Day. We get a number of community partners to come out and pass out candy at Children's Wonderland. It's a free event for the community from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. So, we are looking forward to that event. We also have our Thanksgiving events that are coming up in November and then for the holidays as well. But tomorrow, we are starting our first youth roundtable meeting, which will be held at the 401 Amador Building in our boardroom at GVRD. We have about 15 young people and community partners that will be present tomorrow at the YRT meeting. It starts at 7:30 in the morning. So, we'll have a late evening tonight and then an early morning tomorrow. But that pretty much is all of the updates that we have thus far, unless there are any questions for GVRD.
How's everything going at Franklin with all the events for the sports center?
So, everything is going smoothly for Franklin. We still have that slight challenge with the parking. We have a number of, you know, people, patrons that would like to have access to parking closer to the facility, but there are some restrictions. So, we're still working through that challenge. But we just held last week our input meeting for the Prop 68, which we were awarded 7.2 million to redo the Franklin Field. So, we had our first community meeting last Thursday and then we'll have another one on the 4th of December.
For the fields, can you tell us, is it going to be more like for a soccer area or for, what kind of improvements are you thinking of?
So, we submitted in our application an actual turf field, as well as a natural grass field, pickleball courts, basketball courts, a parking facility and play structure, as well as some picnic tables and seating areas.
Sounds great. Will there be any also, I know when we talked about starting this all up, we talked about maybe looking into the arts as well for students that maybe are not as sports orientated, but they want to have some type of art outlet.
Yes. So, two weeks ago, we just held our first Bridging the Teens and Seniors Art Program, which is taking place at the Valeo Community Center. It is a four-month program. And it really just focuses on partnering young people with our senior population. And they would do a culminating art project that we hopefully will have in the Art Walk Gallery at some point. So, we're working on that.
Is there anything also in the, like for dance or for theater, things like that?
Yes. So, we have a number of contractual classes that we offer. Winter guide. We're offering not only theater classes, but we have some dance classes, which are contractual classes. Sean Renee is the one that leads our hip-hop dance ballet and a number of other opportunities for young people.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Mathulik.
Thank you, President Fox, and thank you, Mr. Ryan, for being here and on behalf of Gabe. So, about a couple of months ago, we, as a city council, we approved, to help support a lot of our public safety programs and plans, we approved $1.1 million in, in a, at one of our city council meetings. And part of that was to help subsidize a lot of the programs that GVRD sponsors. So, the question that I have is, have you seen any increase in applications or any of that type of increase in, in a lot of the signups through that program that we approved?
So, the short answer is yes. We have seen a significant increase in registrations, not only through our programs, but also within the scholarship application process. And we were able to provide over 70 new families with young people with the funds to be able to participate, up to $300 for any GVRD program.
And so I, I think from a city council standpoint, we would love to see a report of, of, of that increase and, and how that helps support some of the families that may not have been able to participate in some of the programs you have. So, at some point, we would love to see that data.
Yes, for sure. Sounds good. Thank you.
What's the timeline for the field? Like, when do you think it'd be completed with the turf and the?
So, we're looking to break ground in 2027. So, hopefully the year after in 2028, we'll have the finalized facility ready to go.
So, it's just in the planning, it's going to take a little while to get to the, okay.
Yeah, it's going to take some time.
It sounds like it's going to be beautiful. So, it's going to have a lot more, because right now the gym is ready for student or for youth to use. But eventually we'll have the fields and other areas as well for access.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Anything else you have to?
That is it. Thank you so much for having me speak today.
Thank you for being here. Have a good night.
All right, you too. Take care.
Do we have any other inter-agency updates? That's all? Okay. We are now down to agenda item eight, discussion items, Mare Island Bridge Construction. City Manager?
Yeah, I think we have our interim Public Works Director, Mr. Alkantar, and one of our city engineers, Mr. Kumar, here to provide an update on the bridge construction.
Good evening. So, this is Sam Kumar. He's our engineer on the project.
The update is recently we changed our traffic pattern. Oh, sorry. The update is recently we changed the traffic pattern, which will go into fact October 7th, which will be one-way westbound from Mare Island. Eastbound will be taking 37, State Route 37. So, this will help people coming into the Mare Island and then going out should be easy for them to get out.
And what timeframes is that? Like during commute in the morning, starting?
The timeframe is 24/7.
What times does it start in the morning?
It'll, it'll be.
It'll be the whole day. It's not just, oh, I thought it was just commute time.
It's 24/7, 365 days.
Oh, okay.
Until the end of the project, which is Jan 5th, 2027.
So, again, one way, can you say the directions again? One way?
Westbound or inbound to Mare Island.
So, the.
And the outbound eastbound would be through State Route 37.
And that starts on October 7th, till the end of the project. It'll be permanent, every day?
Yes. Yes.
And they usually stop around, do they stop by 4:00 or 5:00 each day?
Correct. That is correct.
What time?
Well, the construction stops at that time, but the traffic circulation pattern will be 24 hours a day, every day of the week. We were coincidentally, as you probably have noticed, the temporary, the interim traffic control had been from 5:00 a.m., from, sorry, from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. We were going to change that beginning in October, to having that same arrangement of alternating the one-way traffic on the bridge, turn that to 24/7 anyways in early October. The change we've made, in large part due to the district having expressed concerns about people getting challenged to be on the island on time for their school-related activities, we've changed the circulation pattern so that the one lane of the bridge will be one-way, westbound, all the time, through 24 hours a day, seven days a week, through the completion of the project. Folks that need to head eastbound will go up to Highway 37 and go across. We've done some analysis of that, and determined that that's probably only delay of a couple of minutes to do that, so not much of an inconvenience. We will be monitoring the situation. If it turns out that there are some unexpected challenges with the circulation pattern, we might reevaluate it. We did do quite a bit of stakeholder outreach, just to get input as well as all the due diligence about making sure there weren't any significant public safety response impacts or anything like that. But we talked with many stakeholders through our Police Department Neighborhood Watch Block Captain Network, and they were unanimous in saying that they didn't think there would be any impact of this one-way circular pattern. So, we're excited to see how that goes when it kicks off in early October, and looking forward to any feedback from the school district about whether it's met your needs, or there are any additional tweaks that we can make to help the school district and students.
Thank you. Mayor Sors?
Yeah, thank you for the update. Most of my questions were answered. My only lingering question, I'm assuming that the clog at the 37 end, that the idea is that the clog tends to happen westbound. Are we worried about the clog, like, at the afternoon commute, evening commute? Is there any risk that that's going to clog going eastbound? Okay, the superintendent is saying he just did it, and it's not clogged.
Yeah, that's the direction I went, to avoid the weight at the bridge. I went up to 37 and around.
During the commute, when 37 was clogged. Okay.
Yeah, and also, coming eastbound, it opens up as you hit 37.
That's past the, yeah, it's past where it starts to bottleneck. Yeah, thank you. And, this is a little bit off of, no, it's actually not, because we need to, we need to not only let Mare Island residents know, but also the parents of Vallejo Charter. Do we have a comms timeline of when this is going to get released to the public, and how we can support and making sure the public's aware of the change?
Yeah, Sam, I know that our public information team is, has already crafted the messaging for that, so I don't know exactly, I don't know if it's gone out already.
It'll be going tomorrow morning.
It'll be going out tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
And our comms persons in the audience, so we're prepared to get the messaging out. And I just want to commend the city, because I know we harassed you long enough around this, and the ability to make the change. And, we're really going to benefit from that, especially in the morning, because that's, that was our biggest concern for students getting to school on time, and even our employees getting onto the island on time. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Matulik?
Thank you, President Fox. I know we received quite of, some good positive feedback from the diverging diamond type of construction that was happening, and that was basically due to a lot of the graphics that was sent out to help communicate a lot of that congestion that was potentially going to happen there. Are we doing the same thing for this situation, as opposed to just through text or through Word, but are we actually going to provide a map, and are we going to show a diagram of how to best efficiently go about this?
Yes.
Okay.
The media will have a very simple, common man, understanding diagram. Very simple.
Thank you.
Mayor Sors?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for starting this after Maker Faire. What is going to happen this weekend for me, or next weekend for Maker Faire?
Weekend, we are not working.
There won't be work, there are going to be two lanes open. Is it going to be both directions?
Yes.
Because there's what, going to be 10,000 people going in on and off the island? Okay.
Yeah, two lanes will be open.
Perfect. Okay, that was my only ques, I just, it just clicked for me that there's going to be thousands and thousands of people.
It'll be a challenge on Friday.
Okay.
But we did make a specific commitment to the Maker Faire.
Perfect.
Last year, knowing that they were planning to come again this year, and that the bridge was going to be under construction, that we would make sure the bridge could be open for two-way traffic for their event this weekend. So, that's been resolved.
Perfect. Thank you.
I also wanted to add another information, that October 22nd and October 23rd, the bridge will be completely shut down, both directions, due to construction, in-water construction.
October 22nd and October 23rd, completely closed?
Yes.
Thank you.
All day, 6:00 a.m. to end of the day.
Yeah, what do we need to do to make sure that the Vallejo Charter functions during those days? What are, maybe that's an ongoing conversation of, I mean, I'm open to ideas. I'm open to like, grab a yellow school bus, water taxi. I don't, I mean, like.
Just, I just want to get the dates. October 22nd through the 24th?
No, October 22nd and October 23rd. Two days.
All right. Thank you so much for your update. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
I wanted to introduce, yes. Thank you. Just, we have three new people here. I wanted to introduce them real quick, and then we'll move on to the next item. Our student trustees, we have Sophie Jacobo from Vallejo High School. We have trustee De Leon from John Finney, and we have trustee Arbob from Jesse Bethel. Got to keep all this going. So, we're so thrilled that they're part of our board and part of our team. And Mayor Sors, thank you for your encouragement to make sure they were here. Unfortunately, with all their events, I know that they have, between cheerleading, and wrestling, and all kinds of other clubs, debate, and so forth, they're just, they have other obligations. But, do you want to say anything real quick before you leave? I'll just move real quick here.
Hello? Okay. Just again, thank you for having us here. It means a lot to know that our city wants to hear from us. And I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for my friends right here. I'm speaking for the whole community, that it means a lot to us, that you guys are looking for that student voice, especially in such a rich city, that we're rich in everything, if you ask me. But, yeah, I mean, really quick before I go, we have a football game tomorrow. It is themed camo, Vallejo High School versus George Washington High School over in San Francisco. It will be a home game, so bring your camo and bring your spirit. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. See you next time. And our other two will do your later. Thank you. All right, so now we're down to 8B School Closure Update.
Okay. So, as people are paying attention and noticing that we have moved into the, what we're calling Phase 2 of school closures and consolidations, last night, in fact, the governing board had their first study session, and reviewed the draft of the Equity Impact Analysis Report. We are looking at seven different schools, I want to say around 16 different possible configurations of closures or combinations. I did make an initial recommendation, a preliminary recommendation, to close Lincoln, close Pennycook, and close Cooper Elementary, with a relocation of John Finney Education Complex to the Cooper site. Those are preliminary. No decision has been made at this point. We are going through the process of still gathering information, ensuring that the governing board has all the information they need to make an informed decision, with a target date for that decision, December 17th. Of course, any decision made is not impacting our current school year. These are decisions that would impact the 26, 27 school year. And we continue to engage the community. We've had, we've held one town hall session. We are scheduled for a couple more town halls, including some hybrid and virtual town halls, including a Spanish-only town hall, because we're really trying to engage all the community to hear about the school closures and consolidation. And trustees, if you want to add anything, feel free to add.
Some of the other topics that came up last night were making sure for transportation, the impact, how the new school that will receive students, how would that affect the neighborhood or drop-off pickup. Also, talking about just feasibility of just serving lunches with a larger amount of students, parking for staff. There's so many variables that go into when you add more students to a campus. But then, there's also a lot to look at for the campus that you want to repurpose, for either, you want to save costs with that, but you want to make sure you're not going to accrue more cost, maybe with security or with, anyways, just, there's so many ways to look, the pattern going to or from. So, we looked at many scenarios, and we looked at the scenarios going from one school and then back to the other school. So, we looked both ways. So, we're not looking just, we're trying to keep our mind open. We have a lot of, a lot of time, this time, we have more time to look at this. And, so I thought we had a great discussion, and a lot of things came up. So, it's just taking it day by day, and lots of questions, and trying to get to the point. It's going to be hard, because closing a school, for a neighborhood school, is very difficult for staff, for families, for the neighborhood, for everyone involved. Is there anything else, Vice President Ampoy?
Yeah, we don't take these decisions lightly. We know the impact it's going to make on everyone in the community, whether it's your school or not. Everyone is impacted, and we are definitely looking for more data to, to help us make a more informed decision, because, and no matter what decision that we, that the board does make, we know that it's going to affect all of us, in, in, both good and bad. But, I think it's important that, that for us, as a community, that we're helping each other, and again, helping us to make that decision more, more informed. So, definitely, I'd like to thank everyone who put together the EIA report, because that was, it was something that was, that really opened our eyes for things that we weren't able to see.
One thing interesting came up from our student trustees was about safety, and at certain schools where there's different activities that maybe are not so safe, that were brought up. So, I thought, I let them know that during the 2x2 the last few years, we have brought those up, and we're in partnership with Vallejo PD. And then now, it's exciting to hear about the sheriff also partnering with us. So, because our student trustees asked how, you know, it's not just this school district, we have issues with the city around certain schools, the environment, and what students see coming, walking to and from school. So, I thought, I wanted to make sure that we brought up that we've discussed it. We are continuing to discuss it about the safety, and how to address problems around specific schools, and to make sure they are safe, or that we're trying our best to address all issues. So, it's great having the student voice, and their, what they go through and what they see and hear. I think, anything else about the school closures? City Councilman Matulik?
Thank you, President Fox. And it's not specific for the closure, but it kind of ties into the comment I would like to make. So, as a VCUSD employee, I've been, I'm part of a lot of decisions that are made, and I don't think Superintendent Orellito gets enough credit. For the two years he's been here, he's had to make quite a few difficult decisions. And these decisions were not made lightly. A perfect example of that is, he caused, or he asked for a second audit of, within our, within our system, and through that second audit, we discovered and uncovered a couple of issues that needed to be reevaluated. And from that, there was a, a changing of some thoughts and systems and processes. So, I want to make sure that I give not only Superintendent Orellito, but this, this governing board, a lot of the credit for using data to make a lot of the decisions that have been happening now. They're not the most popular decisions, but they're the decisions that needed to be made. And I see trustee Hodges in the back there, and I see a couple of directors here. I see Director Bagio and Director Tapasio here, that shows the support that Superintendent Orellito has. So, I want to, as a VCUSD employee, I see it firsthand that some of these decisions are not part of the status quo that's been happening in the past. So, I want to commend him for making some of these difficult and tough decisions, and, and showing that we do support a lot of this, and we look forward to some, to this moving forward, to get us out of a lot of the challenges we had. And for those that may not be aware, under his leadership, we are out of receivership. So, that's been part of the successes that Superintendent Orellito has been able to add to his checklist of a lot of the accomplishments that he's done in just the short period of time that he's been here. So, I just want to make sure that Superintendent Orellito does get the acknowledgement and the credit that he has deservedly earned. Thank you.
Mayor Sors?
Yeah, you stole some of what I was going to say, but I, you know, obviously, this is just, these are such difficult, such difficult decisions. And I, I was going to commend, I think, you know, from the, from my vantage point, the effort that the district has taken to include the voices of parents and students, and be as transparent as possible. You're never going to, I mean, you're never going to take away the hurt people are going to feel when they lose their neighborhood school. But I think there's, there's been such a transparent communication around the process, that people really feel like this, you know, we had to do this, and that they can trust the decision-makers in doing so. And again, I say that from my vantage point, and the people that I've talked to and kind of heard from about the school closures, it's that it's unfortunate, but that, you know, as Councilman Matulik said, folks are making the decisions that are going to make us more resilient and set up for the future. So, you know, I have a spot, soft spots for Pennycook, I have a spot, soft spot for Lincoln, I have a, like, these are, these are tough, tough, tough decisions, and, you know, there'll be a lot of work to do. But, I really want to thank you all for tackling it, and for being inclusive and transparent in the process. It's really, I appreciate it, and I think a lot of folks in Vallejo appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to say, for, for rightsizing the district, with California, or our nation is going through with declining enrollment, a lot of our schools are less than 40% occupied. So, in a lot of schools, you have one teacher per grade level. So, they do not have someone to collaborate with, or for programs to work as effective as they could, when you have multiple people at a grade level to collaborate and work with. So, combining schools where you can have stronger programs and better collaboration is what we're looking for through the rightsizing of the district. The other thing is to stay out-of-state receivership. Since we just got out of state receivership, we have to stay financially responsible with not just cuts and declining enrollment, but this is one piece of the puzzle, where we have to also show that we're rightsizing and using our facilities appropriately, and not having too many facilities. So, I just wanted to share that with, with that item. And the other item, I know, and thank you, City Manager, for getting us a report about the update of, these are two asset things. We got the report yesterday for, I've been asking for about seven years, we know, for the title for the district office. And also, we've been in escrow for the Rollingwood property for a number, I think, four or five years. So, those two assets, we need to really get going, because that can help us to do less school closures, if we can show or prove that the district office, we have the title. And, for the Rollingwood property, that would also help us a great deal, because the county, we have to show with our reports and our financials. So, the longer we draw on both of them, it's just harder on the district to show our financials, and show our true status of where we are and where we want to be. So, I want to thank you for the report, and hopefully, however way we can check off all items to get there, I just really appreciate your collaboration, and how we can speed up whatever processes through City Council and the city. We greatly appreciate your time. With that, is there anything else for school closures? All right. So, our next item is Agenda Item 9, Youth Coordinator Updater, Updates. So, our next item is Agenda Item Nine, Youth Coordinator Updater, Updates, Prop 64 and National Night Out.
Good evening, everyone. Victoria Grace Sparksdale, Youth Coordinator for the City of Valeo. I do have a couple of topics I'm going to be updating you guys on. The first one is our Prop 64 grant. This is the grant from the Board of State Corrections and Community and this essentially is taking tax dollars that get paid when they legalize marijuana and it has to get put back into the community to help with different youth-related efforts. And so, the City of Valeo applied for this grant. We were awarded a $2.42 million grant that runs through 2028. We have several different community-based organization partners that are assisting us in a collaborative effort to help with prevention, substance use education, workforce development for youth. And so, I'd like to, well, let him introduce, this is one of our partners here.
Well, greetings everyone. Again, I'm Apostle Anthony Summers, the Lead Baptist Impact Church, but the Executive Director for Healthy Valeo Community Support Services, where we have a youth employment and delinquency prevention program. And we've been a part of the Prop 64 grant for a couple of years and we've hired young people from Jesse Bethel Valeo High Elite Public Schools and we've had up to 30 employees. And so, we do community cleanups, we do weed abatement and trash removal. Right now, we're also working on the train tracks, working with the Public Works Department as well. But it's been amazing, the number of people that we've been able to hire and transform their lives in, to see, I mean, young people have come out of human trafficking and drive-by shootings and just so many things. And I'm talking about high schoolers that are still, had been in poverty at levels you would not believe. So, it's been a tremendous blessing working with Victoria and the Prop 64 team. And I'll certainly say lastly, I often quote Father Gregory Boyle of Homeboy Industries in LA, who says, "Nothing beats a bullet like a job." And so, being able to employ these young people while getting them educated. And I must say, I'll say this lastly, we've had, we had more employees over this last summer than we've ever had from high school and going back to college. We've had five or six that have gone back to college this year and everywhere from Howard to Copeland State to Sac State and certainly the JCs. And now, many of them are stepping into different trades and one young man has, had been working for California Conservation Corps that left us and is connected now with Cal Fire. And so many wonderful opportunities have been happening. So, the Prop 64 grant has been very substantial in helping us to meet those goals. So, thank you, Victoria.
And so, one of the really cool partnerships that we have is you may see these youth out in the community cleaning up public areas. At a certain time, we met with VCSD and when school starts, we want to make sure that there's areas that we know students are walking through, alleyways that kids are walking through, that we're sending out our team to make sure those are clear and, and nice and beautiful for the start of the school year. We also recruit a lot from VCSD schools. So, you'll find our partners, Club Stride, Center for Urban Excellence, who is doing the work that Advanced Peace was doing, as well as Healthy Valeo Community Support Services on your campuses, trying to recruit youth to join our collaborative, to take part in some of the workshops, to apply for a job, as Apostle Summers said, to be able to contribute to beautifying our community. Along with the youth that are employed with Healthy Valeo Community Support Services, we have our partners with Club Stride that has an MOU right now with the school district to provide some different community engagement around substance use prevention as well as workshops. And so, last school year, they started doing their listening sessions. I believe their listening session was held on Valeo High School's campus. This year, they're going to continue that work on Valeo High, also looking at potentially expanding to other campuses. Once they get feedback from their needs assessment and their community engagement, that will be informing the types of workshops that they do. And so, I know there have been, at several council meetings ago, there were instances that in the community, there may be things such as lacing of food or other areas that we need to kind of address on the school sites to make sure that students and youth are aware of the different impacts that these can have, ways to identify substances, ways to be clear about how to prevent substance use. And we're really looking forward to starting those up again this year and potentially expanding. And so, I believe that Club Stride is also going to reach out. I don't know Superintendent Aurelio, if you're familiar with them. They definitely wanted to reach out to your office, so be on the lookout for that. Thank you so much. So, the other update that I have is Sergeant Hollis already talked about National Night Out, Measure P. And so, through Measure P, we have, and, and I want to clarify, Councilmember Matulik, you asked about the public safety, thank you, sorry. You asked about the public safety dollars. That is actually a, an item that's going to counsel for approval for the first step of the budget amendment and then the grant agreement, $300 for GVRD to aid in reducing violence and increasing public safety measures. What GVRD was referring to, which is very similar, is we did a Measure P grant and so, they've been using those funds from last fiscal year. And as he mentioned, he's reported some really great outcomes from that with regards to scholarships, different programming that they were able to fund. And they're working towards also funding scholarships for teams to access facilities so we can keep our sports teams here in Valeo and have more of them stay here versus go to other cities. The Prop 64 Public Safety Grant, it's going to focus a little bit more strategically on our teens, our young adults in specific districts that were identified by council, districts two, three, or I'm sorry, two, four, five, and six. And we want to make sure that we're doing some targeted outreach. We're also providing youth scholarships. We're providing some funding towards youth programming, but we're providing more funding for teen programming because we realize that teen age is really your, your key age that you want to try to catch kids and get them on a positive track, provide them with some positive youth involvement and activities to do. One of the other really cool things that, that we're hoping to do is free days. And so, we've kind of proposed that some of the budget will be spent to provide open gym days at, say, the Franklin Sports Gym, free days and entrance into Children's Wonderland Park, free parking at sites such as Dan Foley and Blue Rock Springs. And so, we think that by allowing more people to access those safe spaces, we're able to provide a lot more broad of a reach and, and better outcomes that can touch all types of community members. And then my last update, we have another youth delegation coming up and it's going to be coming up at the end of November. This one is a National League of Cities Summit. This is geared towards youth councils, towards local government as opposed to the last one that was in Washington DC that our young people went to, which was more a congressional conference. And so, I'm excited. We have some three new faces. They are very familiar with our youth delegation program, so I'm very excited to have them as well as put out some more applications so we can get some representation from all of our high school campuses. The date of that next City Summit Conference is November 19th and 20th. And so, essentially, our dates for the trip would be Tuesday, November 18th through Friday, November 21st. And I will be working with Ms. Sharita Dilly, of course, and Ms. Heather Tapasio to make sure that we get those applications out to the school campuses. Again, like always, I would greatly appreciate this body's assistance in sort of scoring and selecting some of the applications. I know we have a really tough time. Those are also some tough decisions to make because VCSD has such great, great candidates to go, but we're really looking forward to taking another crop of students and providing them with that opportunity. Are there any questions?
Where are they going in November?
Salt Lake City, Utah. So, fairly closer than some of our other trips, which is cool. The last trip they went to was Washington DC, Tampa, Atlanta.
Are we still looking at about eight students?
Yes, eight students total, two chaprons.
Okay.
This year, I think something different is we've added another school board trustee. And so, as I mentioned before, we have kind of a standing position to offer to the student trustees. So, last, last year, I believe it was only two student trustees and the year before that, one. So, we're just adding more voices. We love it.
I wanted to ask, um, thank you. There any other? No. Okay. One of the things under the Prop 64 for the drug prevention, that is so important with just to save a youth's life, to have that prevention at all of our campuses. I know in October, we have Red Ribbon Week, but that's just a small thing that we do every year. But somehow, you said it's mostly focused right now just Valeo High School, but I think the, however, we can try to get that prevention to all the high schools and as soon as possible and through youth leadership, I, I just, to save a life through prevention, the, I just would like to see that happen as fast as possible.
Actually, our team did have a question for the district. Is there a specific staff person that sort of does that work for the district already? And maybe we can connect with them to see how we can work together on some things?
I'm going to need a check with Ms. Tapasio on that to see who coordinates that, that piece of it.
And when I mean save a life, I mean, I know we, last year, I remember talking about the young lady in Santa Rosa that OD'd from fentanyl. She didn't know she was even taking fentanyl and she died. She was a high school student. And then, but also not just saving lives with students getting addicted and then their life is very difficult from that point on. So, saving actually their, their life from not taking a drug that can kill them, but also from, to prevent addiction and hopefully for cigarettes too, but that's another whole, cigarettes and vaping. But I'm hoping that whatever funding or maybe other agencies or grants can augment maybe the prevention, teaching or funding, whatever can be done, that's just so dear to me that we reach them as soon as possible.
Great.
Trustee Deleon, do you want to make a comment?
Did I? Oh, with the, I know you spoke on like drug prevention and stuff like that. Is there any way that with you guys doing stuff like that, that we can have trainings and stuff on how to administer like Narcan and stuff like that if we run into something like that? Because I, I don't know how.
That is certainly something we can look into and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Pastor Summers, did you want to say something?
There's a young lady who's a part of our team, Dr. Dion Carter. She's been coming out and working with us with drug prevention and she comes out every month and she is excellent. And we, to be able to get her in the schools, even through Prop 64, whatever means that are necessary, I so highly recommend her to bring her experience dealing with drug and violence prevention. She just weaves it in so well. We're very fortunate to get her to come and speak to our youth on a monthly basis. And if there's a way that we can bridge that and make that happen, we would certainly love to do that.
If you can share the resource, her contact, that would be...
Yeah, so it's Dr. Dion Carter with Center for Urban Excellence. And that may be something we're looking into with Prop 64 because we do have the MOU to already go on the campuses and do some of this work, so.
But I would also think that not just through grants, but I bet local agencies or even our churches or businesses in Valeo would, I bet they would help fund that or, or add to that because of how important is to protect our youth's life and their future from addiction. So, I, I just see personally, maybe I'm, I don't think I'm wrong, but I hope I'm not wrong, but I think that's an avenue that we can try to find. I just think that that needs to be hit on a lot better than what is being done now.
Yeah, and through, through our grant, we do have a certain number of workshops that we have to do in partnership with VCSD, but we also have some that can be done in the community. And so, if you do have referrals of, say, a church or an organization that's seeking that type of education, then please let us know and we can talk as a team on how to get, get them out there.
Well, I just, she made the church out of passion. Well, I think maybe what we may be able to do. And what since Dion is doing, she's required to do the workshops for us through Prop 64. So, maybe if we can wire it, we could just make one of the days that she meets with us and we can just come to the campus if, if we can work that out. And we'd be more than glad to share that knowledge and we can bring our, maybe the youth employees to, if we can do that, to the campus. And so, everyone's getting the same information at the same time and cut costs and everything if that can be worked out.
Love the brainstorming. Love the brainstorming. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? No? Thank you so much. Thank you for the update. At this time, we are now on Agenda Item. I know that one of our trustees have to go in a moment, so let's see. Action calendar, is there anything? Inclusion, let's turn to board members. Okay. I think that's basically where I introduced them. Trustee Deleon, do you want to say something for, you have to go in a few minutes?
I don't have to leave anymore, so.
Oh, okay. Well, go ahead anyways.
Oh, okay. Good evening. Yeah. I'm Zania Deleon. I'm a senior attending John Finney Education Complex. I was first introduced to what the district does as far as like student trustees and stuff through the, actually, the student trustees from last year, Elasia Simmons and Ricardo Morales. Yeah, I went to DC with them on the last NLC Conference delegation trip and they actually said that they thought I would be a good fit for the student advisory, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. So, I started doing that and from there, I got acquainted with that and realized that we don't have a representative as far as student trustee from my school, so then I applied. My main thing when I came into student trustee was I wanted to help with special education because my brother, he attended Everest four years ago now and he passed right before he graduated. And so, my main thing was making sure that they had support. I also wanted to help in finding ways that I could help my school and give them the same opportunities as far as college, jobs and everything that the rest of the bigger high schools have. And being on the council now or just being student trustee, it's honestly opened my eyes to a lot more that I really didn't know about the district or school in general. I feel that I've positively impacted my school. I've got acquainted with a lot more of the school and I feel that we're, student trustees speaking for all of us, you know, we're a new voice, we're a new set of eyes. And I feel that we've brought good questions and comments to the meetings. We're also very outspoken, so we keep them on their toes. I don't think there was anything necessarily that I wanted to ask or say. I think the one thing that I did want to ask, and I know you're, you're busy a lot, but, but I know it was good when I got to see you and you came to my campus and I know you went to... you went to the other two as well. I think the one thing that I was asking is if you could go to, if the schools, even the elementaries, if they hold certain events or something, if you could, if you have the time to make an appearance. I think it's good for younger kids as well to know who the mayor is or who the superintendent is, people like that. And know just a face, put a face to a name and stuff like that. And more internship or stuff, ideas for kids for school age. Other than that, I was, that's me.
Thank you. Trustee Jarboe from Jesse Bethel.
Good evening, committee. So again, my name is Boros Jarboe. I'm the student trustee for Jesse Bethel. I actually first found out about the student trustee position my freshman year of high school. I'm a junior now from the first student trustee of Jesse Bethel, Ronnie Taylor. And I also learned about the youth delegation program from my mentor and a former youth delegate, Julio Vasquez. I've been involved with leadership since middle school. I was part of Vallejo Charter, which was recently relocated to Mary Island, Vallejo Charter's leadership team. And I actually first learned about the governing board when I came to a couple of governing board meetings to talk about my school, which was a great opportunity to give a little bit about the student side of what we thought about the things that our school did because Vallejo Charter has always offered a lot of different programs. I've always been interested in leadership and it's, first off, it's because I have a lot of family in the district and I want to make sure that they know about opportunities, they know there's someone there that's speaking for them and speaking, and that goes for all the students of all the schools in VCSD, specifically Jesse Bethel, because that's the school I'm representing. I think it's great that we have a student voice, several student voices. Great that we have three now for each of the different high schools and that we even have a student advisory committee because having people from the middle schools, students that will get impacted by things like the school relocation, school closures, having, allowing them to have a voice. So we don't just hear from staff or parents, we also hear from the students because those are the ones that the schools are made for. They're the ones that are impacted by every day. So I applaud again Superintendent Aurelio for that, for creating the advisory committee. But I'm looking forward to improving things for my school, for VCSD. I know we already got a lot of stuff done in the bathrooms, added dividers to the boys' bathrooms and the walls were painted. And that's been something that's, that students have told me about. So let's get more wins for our students.
Thank you. Continuing with reports from our committee members, Councilman Matulik, would you like to continue?
Can I comment on that real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Sors.
Yeah, of course. I, so first of all, yes, it was as if you were a plant and we had talked about this before the meeting. I, when I took office, I was very adamant that I visit all the high schools, very adamant that I do it every year. And I think what we do, particularly the mayor of Vallejo, what I do with my time speaks to values and to avoid getting too flowery or sentimental. I mean, I was a public school kid, K to college, went to my district school, my state school. I, I want to support VCSD however I can. And so the more we can build up that communication and expectation, the graduations, the, like those are the low hanging fruit. But yeah, anytime you have an event, anytime something's going on, a government class, a, the elementary school reading, I mean, I am, we were just talking about bike and roll to school. I went to Lincoln. Whatever I can do, whatever you think of, worst case, it takes us a minute to fit it into the schedule, but I will chuck the other ceremonial step in favor of going to our schools. That's just a priority thing. And we piloted an internship program in the mayor's office with Center for Urban Excellence this summer. I know that there's volunteer requirements in our high schools. I think we have a little bit of work to do. Victoria and I, with our interns, actually, we had a whole conversation over the summer about this. And I don't, I'm not a fan of unpaid internships, but I think if someone's getting course credit or they're meeting a volunteer requirement for high school, I, I think that's a missing piece to get more young people into here. So we're definitely looking at that out of our office. So like I said, it was like you were reading my mind. Those are things we're actively working on. My proposal for this, I mean, I love having the student trustees at these meetings. I wonder if we couldn't put, I don't know that with schedules and your lives and everything you have going on, that it makes sense for everyone to be on the two by two, but maybe what if we put one student trustee and an alternate, like up here on the two by two, participating in all the discussions and commenting? They could be a non-voting member or a tiebreak voter or whatever. That part doesn't matter as much to me, but that's sort of what I was thinking is actually put somebody up here. Or if everyone wants to be, I'm not opposed to that either, but I just, I know that there's a lot of demands on folks' time and it might make sense to officially appoint one and then if they can't make it, have an alternate.
So we're gonna fight for that, but I would suggest maybe a rotation if that's us.
Or a rotation.
You know, because it is a lot of time that we're pulling them.
Yeah, I mean, to have to come all three every month.
Right.
But we could do that too. I don't, I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I'm just trying to think about, you know, time.
Go ahead.
Well, I know because we attend the two by two. Do we attend every two by two?
Historically, you haven't that position, but we wanted to make it more formalized so that you have an active role in the two by two.
I was gonna say, I'm rooting for us to do it too, but because we do have the student trustee position, is there any way that if, not that, if it, if it, if we had the option for it to not have to be us, if it's a spot that people can interview for? Because I know even, because I'm still in contact with just for instance, Elasia. And she's still very involved in the city, but because the student trustee position is a one-year role or one school year role, it would be a good opportunity for kids who don't get the student trustee position that still want to be active somewhere in the
I mean, I like the idea and we are, so actually Monday, Monday, the 29th, I believe, is our superintendent student advisory committee meeting, which includes us trustees and we have some new students joining the committee. We could always pitch that there as well.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great idea because I, I would like to, I think those are, I think those are all good. There's pros and cons to everything, I think, having, I mean, the student trustees are so versed in what's happening in the policy. But I also love the idea of opening up opportunities to more folks and getting more folks' access. So yeah, maybe run it by that group and then let us know what they recommend and we'll adopt their recommendation. I don't know if others have thoughts, but yeah, I'd love to have a student sitting up here. Why not? It's a great idea.
The other piece with the student advisory is we're looking at the structure of it this year being a little more formalized where there's, you know, they're, they're gonna vote sort of for officers within the committee itself. Whereas last year, we, we mostly facilitated and we're looking at having students facilitate more of those. So maybe there's a role that could be, that can come from that group.
Okay. More to come on that. Councilman Matulik?
Thank you, President Fox. I, I think with that being said, I think if we want to give them a more formal role within the agenda itself, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to putting them, we have report out of, for community members, report out of student trustees or, or youth in general. I mean, just have a special, so that way they're not, they don't have to be committed to attend these, but if they're available, they have a, a standing spot that they can actually always speak in. And obviously, we always have community forums, so any students or anyone that wants to speak at that point, that would be a great opportunity. And that's where we would encourage a lot of the youth to come in and kind of share a lot of things that are going on, on each one of your campuses. And to trustee Deleon's point, the fact that she's appreciative of the opportunity just being on as a trustee on this, I, I think this is where I would like to, giving people opportunities, that is where it all starts. This is where you get inspired, this is where you get motivated to where the fact, I work at an elementary school, I think people, I think a lot of these thoughts are focused at the high school and almost even middle school level. I don't, I don't want to leave out the elementary school levels because I know especially at the fourth and fifth grade levels, I've actually been trying to have conversations of having a fourth, a field trip to City Hall or something of that nature, just to expose the kids of, of how government and, and things of that nature, something as simple as that, whether that's going to create a spark. I know, I know a lot of the students at my school, they come up to me and actually last year over the spring, our fifth graders, they were, they have to do a report. And lo and behold, what I was told was a lot of them, they Googled up, they were Googling things and they found me on Google. And so a lot of the students did a report on me as a staff member that they know type of deal. So they think I'm famous for whatever reason they, but, but I had to kind of temper their, what they, what their thoughts are to what reality actually is. So, so, but with that being said, I think the fact that they're exposed to a lot of things that if we, once we expose students to something that they're not used to and then that'll inspire the thought and the leadership process, I think we just need to be open to, to making those opportunities available at any cost to, from that standpoint.
Thank you. Mayor Sors.
Can we, can we pilot the field trip idea with Vallejo Charter on October 22nd or 23rd? But in all, I, I like that idea. I'm, I'm there for all of this and I think maybe I, I've had a tendency over the last, you know, nine months to try and do a lot of planning and thoughtfulness, but I think there's, there's a value in us just trying stuff and seeing how it goes and tweaking from there. I mean, look at how we went from one student trustee to three. You know, if you had waited to make that program perfect, now, now look where we are. So I think we, we go, we pick a couple of things and do it and build from there.
Thank you. More to come on that then.
Through the chair, sorry. When this item came forth to add student trustees to the agenda, that is why it's on action today. So just for the record, we can defer it to a meeting date uncertain or to be determined, just for formality, if that's okay.
Yeah, thanks. It sounds like we're gonna run it by the advisory committee and then maybe make an official decision next month.
Is that okay? Yes, thank you. To be determined. Thank you. All right. Great discussion on that. And thank you so much for being here today. We're down to reports from committee, committee members. Who would, would you like to start, Councilman Matulik?
Sure. I think one of the things that I would like to give a shout out to within the district is that over the spring semester, Sharita Dilly helped process an, an application for a community schools grant. And through that, there were seven schools that were, that were participated in that and Dan Mini Elementary School is one of those seven schools. So I, we are, at least at Dan Mini, we are honored to have that opportunity with that community school grant. And so we've identified quite a few services and programs that we're able to implement there and increasing staffing and increasing resources. So, and I'm hoping this is the start of branching out to something bigger, whether it's through this community school grant, because it's a five-year pilot program right now. So from that, hoping there's other opportunities, whether there's other future grants or something can, can blossom from this. I think it's a great opportunity to, to identify other funding ways or resources or funding sources to help augment some of the programs that we may be lacking within the school due to funding gaps that we may have. So I think it's just that giving, giving the opportunity to identify, how do we branch out? How do we do more with less? And I think this is a great way to start that by successfully achieving this application for this community grant. So I want to give Sharita Dilly and her team a great shout out for getting this done.
Thank you. Vice President Ambly?
On 9/11, I did attend the, the memorial raising of the flag or raising the flag half staff at, at Jesse Bethel. I think it was important that we probably communicate a little bit more with having more members of the community as well as the city of Vallejo of honoring the ones who have fallen at that time. Because I'm sure everyone remembers where they were when, when that, those events happened. Also, wanted to thank everyone on the school board as well as Superintendent Aurelio. Again, we know, we, we understand the hard work that's ahead of us. And, and I wanted to thank the community as well, being patient with the decision that we are going to make. And it does affect us all. And again, we don't take this decision lightly and I've, I've said this several times and I know how important it is that after we make the decision that we're, you know, grouping ourselves together, finding every, you know, every school has a stronger program. Every, and it's not just, oh, I, I want my kid just to go to this school over another school. It's just, there's more equity in terms of, okay, my, my child is going to attend this school and I'm confident enough to know that they're going to have the best quality and equitable education versus going to another city. Because if anything, I mean, our big thing at VCSD is think PC, VCSD first. And you know, not only that, I think we should also think Vallejo first as well. Because we are all, we all, this is our city, this, and we work way too hard and we're up on this, this dius. Because it's what we, we, we feel what's important for the children and that's always going to be our first and foremost. And you know, if we don't have a strong education system and, and if we're not fiscally responsible for the decisions we make, we're not going to have, we're not going to have that, those items in the future. So it's, I, I'm sorry to be such a downer in a one sense, but I, it's so, weighs very heavy on all of us. And we understand the choices that, that we have to make. It's not only school closures, it's, it's things coming from top down. And then these are our community members, these are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are our family members. And I don't want to, I really don't want to close anything at all. What I would like to do is just encourage more people to come to VCSD, increase enrollment, you know, making sure all the children attends class. But the reality is it's declining enrollment throughout the entire country. But we're doing the best that we can, communicating the way we, we're, for everything that we're doing, I think it's, it's just a lot of hard work and, and I just want the best for, for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Sors?
Yeah, thank you. I did have one update from the Soul Trans and I know we had had them here a couple times in the spring talking about the route changes and comprehensive operational analysis. So that was approved by the Soul Trans Board earlier this month and those route changes are going to go into effect next, I want to say August, but about, about a year from now. And I think, you know, having that partnership and continuing to strengthen that partnership as those difficult closure decisions are made, we can be in close communication with Soul Trans to make sure that our young people and our families that have to go a little bit farther to go to school or have a new path to school also have bus options. And, and obviously, youth ride free has been, has been successful and we've got that for another couple of years. I also saw an article earlier this month that attendance is up pretty considerably at VCSD this year over last. So I wanted to congratulate you all on that. And I think especially in this climate, it speaks to the, the momentum and the welcoming environment that the district has created. We have officially broken ground on the Sonoma Boulevard improvements. So there was a comment earlier about the safety around our schools, which is a huge issue. This is going to really significantly impact Grace Patterson on the Sooner side because they're starting, they're doing the entire six mile stretch of Sonoma Boulevard, not just paving, but it's a complete street project, which is going to include curb ramp, curb ramps and medians and sort of pedestrian and bike friendly features. It's going to basically just be a complete transformation of that entire six mile stretch of Highway 29. And so because they're going south to north, Grace Patterson will see that impact. Though, well, they'll see some construction inconveniences probably for, for a minute, but then they'll, they'll really see that impact and then Lincoln will, will see that impact next and maybe Dan Mini to somewhat, somewhat of an extent when it gets to the end. But I think that's going to be a real big, particularly for Grace Patterson, that's going to be a huge, huge safety boost. And then from my end, I'll just say, I mean, I will follow up on the information we got about the title for the district office. I'm prepared to do whatever I can to get the district the title ASAP. And I'll have to follow up with the city manager on that because if, if it means putting state legislation through, I will put, I will badger our assembly member and our senator and I will get state legislation through. I do not want you waiting more years for that. I, I want to try to get that to you. I want to try to get that to you ASAP, because if we can close even one fewer school because we get that title, I think we should do everything we can to make that happen.
Thank you to both of you for that, city manager and mayor source. That would be incredible. Any updates from either of you before I talk? Neither of you? Okay. But I'm inclusive to everyone. So then, the, for me, I think you hit on some of what I was thinking, is when we do the school closures, the transportation routes, and we are going to have to look into even maybe changing some of our boundaries because of school closures, which is going to be very difficult. But I also want to look at the forecast from our federal government. There's something that I brought up before within our own district. A lot of food programs are going to be being cut soon. So with the food programs, students to get breakfast, lunch, or maybe even, that's going to be changing very quickly, that they won't, it won't be free. It's going to be cut very soon. And it worries me when students don't have breakfast, they can't think or learn, or if students, those are the meals they have every day, and then those are being cut. I just want to make sure that we're thinking proactively going forward this next year, that there's ways to find food sources for those that will need them once cuts are made. Just be proactive on that. And then other cuts that will also be continually made. It's really sad, just personally, it's hard, the polarization of the rich and the poor, and just that's, I think, all of us coming together and just hearing people brainstorm and find ways that we can make things work, sharing resources and, or just however to think ahead, to take care of our community here in Vallejo. I think that's what we're going to have to do as more of these cuts keep coming down upon us. I think that's all. And then the next item, agenda item 12, information calendar. I think our next meeting is going to be Thursday, October 23rd at 4:30. Is that correct? Thank you. Are there any future agenda items or they could be submitted later as well? I know I'm curious about prevention, drug prevention or vaping and cigarette prevention, but we can find ways to, hopefully, that's one thing I'd like to make sure is happening, especially next month, October, is Red Ribbon Week. Are there any future agenda items or not this time? Oh, Nebraska Street. Maybe just see how it's going with the speed humson, where we're at and going further with closing just during the school day. I, we haven't met for a while, so just maybe an update on that. Anything else? All right. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? Okay. So then we'll have adjournment at 5:57. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.